I heard about lawyers.
There's tons of jokes out there about us.
There seems to be a...
Yeah, I wonder why that is.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Can I get, did you have a copy of that letter? Yeah, could I get, could you get me one?
Yeah, she's copied what I had.
Oh, okay. Well, then maybe I can get it from here.
But he copied mine.
My neighbor has a new part in the board today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who has Dennis?
Now I'm on.
Dennis?
Sorry.
Bart?
Okay, before we call the meeting to order as usual, Jill will handle the swearing in because our judge could not be here this evening. So...
Judging from that.
Yeah.
He's putting a hard...
So you want me to call Alderman Bob Hamel?
Could we do this before then in Easter?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know that.
Otherwise you're unofficial.
Oh, oh, now how do I do this?
Yes, yeah.
Get a nice bottle.
I don't think it's...
Aye, Bob Hamel. Haven't been elected to the office of Alderperson. District two.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. And will faithfully and impartially... Discharge the duties. Of set office. To the best of my ability. So help me God. Thanks.
It's prior to the meeting, Neil.
Yeah, we always do this prior to the meeting because you have to be sworn in to actually be in the seat for the meeting. It's listed, but it's prior to the calling to order. Alderman Kevin Kubaki?
Aye, Kevin Kubaki. Having been elected to the office of Alderperson. District six. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. And will faithfully and impartially... Discharge the duties. Of set office. To the best of my ability. So help me God. Thank you.
Okay, and Alderwoman Eileen Madden.
Aye, Stephen Lee.
Aye, Eileen Madden. Having been elected to the office of Alderperson. District seven. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. And will faithfully and impartially... Discharge the duties. Of set office. To the best of my ability. So help me God.
Okay. Congratulations, I am now going to call the meeting, oops, I gotta wait for Jill. Sorry, I forget. Don't rush.
Yeah. We need Jake to snake tonight?
No, we're not gonna do any of that. It's too hard with this kind of stuff.
Okay, we're good.
We're good, okay, I'm gonna call the common council meeting to order Tuesday, April 16th, 2019. At 6:03 PM. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Alderman Madden?
Here.
Alderman Kubaki?
Here.
Alderman Engelhardt?
Here.
Alderman Capusta is absent. Alderman Borgman?
Here.
Alderman Hamel?
Here.
Alderman Wolf?
Here.
And Mayor Chavarotti?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Communications, I just wanna congratulate everyone, I know they were tough races, but it's pretty quiet these days, but I wanna congratulate you and welcome back. Public comment, there is none this evening. New business. Start with comments from the newly elected officials. I'll start at this end, anything you wanna say?
I'm just happy to be back, looking forward to another two years of doing the best I can do.
I'll second that.
That's brief. And then we have...
Just I'll keep it short, I'll second that and thanks to everyone that has supported me.
Okay. Then we have election of council president, you should have your cheat sheet in front of you that we need every year because it's always complicated for me. Nomination on a white ballot. And submit those to Jill.
It's a secret ballot.
Yes. Yes, it is. There are, the top nominees are Alderman Kubaki and Alderman Wolf. So now you will cast your vote also on a white ballot. Thank you for the cheat sheet, it's helpful.
I was gonna say, I was reading the Walter thing, this is...
Do we have to initial this? What, do we have to initial these?
Not this one.
Not this one, okay.
Get so confused.
Following the rules here.
You'll have to let me know, I don't think it says what the initial later.
You?
Oh, yeah, here it is. Got it.
There's 40 ballots. Didn't you have to sign that?
What?
Didn't you have to sign those? Which ones did we have to sign?
No, not this one. Not this one.
Not that one, which ones?
No, the next ones.
The next two, it's on your construction sheet.
Okay. We have four votes for Alderman Kubaki and two for Alderman Wolf, so Alderman Kubaki is the council president.
Okay.
Congratulations. Okay, now we move on to nomination for the plan commission representative, that is a pink ballot. And do the initial all of these now correct?
Not the nomination.
Just the vote, okay, so you don't have to initialize, initial the nomination.
Oh, are we supposed to initial those?
No, not the nomination.
Not yet, okay.
The voting ballot.
It's amazing how many times that question gets asked.
Okay, the two nominees are Alderman Madden and Alderman Kubaki. So now cast your... Now you can cast your vote.
He's asking if he can be on both, can he have both positions?
Yes, you can, there's nothing, yeah. So you, it's been done in the past, I know, and it's, so Alderman Madden, Kubaki, now you vote on a pink slip and this you have to initialize.
Yes, correct.
Initial. Is that a word? I don't even know, I think I made it up. Okay, Alderman Kubaki has the most votes and is the plan commission representative. Congratulations. Now we are the council representative to the Little Muskego Lake District, this is the blue ballot. And this is just the nomination, no initials are needed. Okay, all nominees, nominations are for Alderman Engelhardt, but you still have to vote, so now you have to vote and initial on the blue ballot. I don't know why I'm looking, because they can't do anything. Congratulations, Alderman Engelhardt. I know it's a surprise, but... Okay, thanks again Jill for the cheat sheet, really helps. Okay. Moving on, resolution 29, 2019, a word of bid for parks, boulevards, terraces, and facility landscaping and maintenance and athletic field renovations, as well as game day preparation.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we've motioned a second, any discussion?
Yes. We don't have anything to push, huh?
No, we're not using that tonight.
Okay, I think that reviewing this after the last vote, I feel that number one, the city's losing its creativity, it's losing its touch with the residents here. I think that we're making it easy for the city to do things. And as a council, it's not our job to make things easy, it's our job to take a look at everything, including the concerns of the citizens, which elect us, and that's one reason why they elect us, to listen to them. I think the creativity is gone, we should have looked at this in other fashions. Maybe we should network with other city functions like the schools and see what they did to take care of the baseball association, you know, they lease it out to them. I don't know why we can't lease it to them, you know. Then they can take care of their own stuff, because once we lease it to them, it's not a city property anymore at that point, so we don't have to govern through the contract. So our outsourcing makes it really easy, we're outsourcing the friendliness of the community, in my opinion. I think we're not focusing on why we're elected. Our job is not to make it easy, our job is not, it's to create policy, it's not the administration side. The administration needs to do what they need to do and get creative and work with the people and come to a conclusion, and they still can do that. I mean, it's a concern for me, you know, I don't wanna feel like I'm losing the trust of the people that put me here, you know, that we're not listening to them. We cut them off the last meeting, we wouldn't even let the last couple of people talk, I think that's wrong. You know, we wanted to argue with them, I think that's wrong. You know, we're not listening, so I think that this is not a good deal. I think that if this goes away, it involves a lot of people, and I don't think with the network they have in place can't be replaced with the rec department, quickly at least. We have a nice baseball field that they helped build, and they have some concerns over it, they use it the most out of anybody for baseball. I think we should be looking at lease options, I mean, even after the vote here, you know, if you guys stay with the same vote and it goes through, we should be able to pull that out. I also have a question, and I don't know if it was answered or not, we kept talking about per use, did we ever find out? Is it in the contract for per use? Did you look that over, Jeff, at all?
It says it's, it's not, yeah, you mean as needed?
Right, pay for per use.
The contract doesn't say as needed, it says you're not guaranteed a number of games. I mean, a number of games for the person who's gonna prep the fields.
Okay.
So I didn't see the words as needed in the contract.
So we can determine that a different way, or is that pretty solid?
Well, I think a guarantee is a guarantee, if you say you're not gonna guarantee a certain number of games, and I think the person says, okay, I'm bidding on this and I may get none, I may get 200, I may get 400, there's no guarantee.
So then, so then that brings me back to the concern that I brought up about us leasing it to them. I know the school board leases the, the schools lease the grounds to MAA for $1, and then they have to take care of everything other than that, I think we can do it on a per use basis. So they can come up with a schedule on their amount of games, and when they're played with, maybe rain date, you know, within a reasonable time, and do it that way, and then they can take care of their own grounds and we don't have to charge them, so that if we lease it to them, they don't have to honor the contract, is that correct? Because once we lease it, it's not part of the city functions.
If you leased it to them, then you'd have to enter into a bigger agreement, and as part of that agreement, I think what you're saying is they would have to maintain the fields a certain way.
Right, and they can work that out, because I think what they did, and we kinda talked about that, is that, you know, when we went through and put it in, they want the Cadillac to take care of it. And they, maybe they don't need a Chevy, I mean, I don't know, but these are my concerns, I mean, you know, I think the lease, you know, after this, I think the administration needs to get back together with the club and work some things out and see if there's something else we can do and learn from this and move forward. But, you know, my concerns are, we're outsourcing the friendliness of what we do up here. And that's concerning to me, I really believe that we're, I can give a lot of examples, I'm not gonna get into them, but the personal touch that we've had in the past as a smaller city that's growing is disappearing. And I think it's a shame and I don't wanna see that happen. So you can disagree with me, but that's my feelings, and I think that I probably have a lot of support of a lot of people that feel the way I do. And it's starting to become alarming now, looking back over the last couple of years and some of the things we've done. And these are community events that we don't want to participate in, we wanna wash our hands of and take the easy way out, and I think it's not our job to take the easy way out. That's all I got to say.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll say something, you know, Rob may be correct on that, we, I think that we probably need to find a better way down the road to handle this and do this. However, I do believe that the, the contract as it was submitted, you know, it did come back $3,500 over budget. So if, my understanding from last meeting is if this goes, you know, if we reject it and it goes back out to bid, we're putting all the citizens and taxpayers of Muskego at a, you know, higher risk, you know, we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna be well over budget then. I did get some information from New Berlin regards to their field prep, they're just right around $50,000 a year doing it in-house. If, I'm not sure, you know, that's just some information, I don't know what that all entails, they just gave me a breakdown of the cost and how much your labor was and how much, how much your labor was and supply cost was.
What they do for the total prep either, right?
Right, so I don't, I don't know if that entails the bare minimum, or does it entail everything? I think what we need, probably need to do is further down the road is get some information, you know, work with the groups, what do you need, and have them involved in it as well. When we sit down and discuss this, when it goes out to bid, maybe they were, we don't know that, you know. We were given a list, but, you know, were they in there when they were, you know, when the, you know, we talked to the contractors and stuff, you know. And what is an option if we did do it in-house, I know maybe we could still do it in-house, I know we did it last year. Right, Scott? But we got rid of the equipment, we don't have it, or?
No, we still have the equipment.
Do we?
It's part of the contract.
Okay.
It's just one machine, I believe.
It may not be enough, who knows?
Yes, we still have the equipment, we didn't get any other supplies, when we, if you remember back when we did the memo back in March of 2018, it was designed to be a one-year fix.
Right.
It was designed that we got no public bids, and in order to solve the problem ASAP, because baseball season's starting, we stepped up as a city, we figured out what we would cost, we figured out how to handle it, and we took it over at one year, and we put even in that memo back to you, our plan was to throw it all in one, so we would guarantee not handling it for the years. That's kinda when, if you go back and that was the memo that was attached, that's why we did it, for that one year. We didn't go forward in 2019 in budgeting or planning to ever plan to prep fields. We didn't have a line, there's no line item plan, there's no chalkboard, there's no, you know, nothing has been bought or planned for 2019 to prep the fields.
Which, yeah, that makes sense, but I guess going forward to try to resolve this issue, we could have that as one of the considerations. I think, you know, like I said, I think it helps to have the organizations involved on this with the cost. Because what I don't like is it's left in our hands, we go out, do what they're requesting, and they don't like what we're coming back with. I'd rather see, okay, this is what we want, you know, it's gonna be in your hands, you take care of it, and I think I mentioned this last time, if they know somebody, have them come to us, and if, it's good, but I think there needs to be a better way, but in regards to this contract, it's already a little bit over budget if it goes back out, or I shouldn't say, the bid, it would come back a lot higher, and I think that puts us in a lot more jeopardy than...
I would like to say one thing, and one of the representatives here, we have probably met with you in the last five months with Ryan and myself, way more than probably...
Representative from?
MAA, we have probably sat down with the storm representative, we have gone through the scope of work that is wanted, we've gone through alternatives, they, I mean, we have no problems meeting with them, and we have several times through this whole thing. It just, we all kinda knew when this is going out for a public bid, you know, the chances of it getting higher and from what the deal was, it was gonna go higher, I mean, it is what it is when you put it out there. We can always look at ways in the future to mitigate that cost a little bit, but to say that we didn't sit down with them, I think it would be just, I think, wrong for like Ryan and myself and just kinda meeting with them and going over the scope and alternatives that they could want, so, you know, that's just one thing I, I have, if they're willing to give me any names to bid on this, I would love to have 20 bidders on this thing. The more bids you have, the lower cost it is, I, as many people wanna do it, it's out there, go ahead and do it. And I would love for it to be as many people as possible.
Thank you.
No, no, I agree, you know, I understand all that, and my concern is that the citizens don't always understand the government and how it works and the meetings and everything and so on. I think actually, we actually can defer this another week and it wouldn't hurt us, and...
No, it would hurt us.
Jeff, can we defer this another week?
Well, legally you can do it, that's not what I'm referring to.
But we don't, we don't have to accept bids on this exact same day, we've done this before, we did it with the city hall when it was being built, we deferred things. My point is that if we do that for a week, it gives a chance for the administration to work with the club and look at it and maybe come up with a lease that can be put in and make this happen so that they can take care of it on their own, and, you know, I mean, these are things that weren't brought up in conversations and things that I looked at and found out through the schools system that are possible, and understanding that even possibly there might be some people stepping up on the school side that will like to do the field preps and start a side business or something, you know. And that's actually something they're looking at doing right now with the couple of fields that they do, as well as we might even lose field time at Park Arthur because of all this. We, they might be moving some of their games elsewhere, and I don't think that's really good. Like I said, I think if we took this over at a rec department, we don't have the infrastructure in place to do that, and I know we would want to do something for the kids if it's just a clinic or something, I mean, the schools don't do it, we have a dissolution or whatever you call it with the schools, so we separate it from that, we don't use their fields or anything. But like I said, I think that if it passes today and we do decide to vote on it, that it should still go back and have them take a look at this, putting a lease together, and at the least, I think, deferring it a week so that we can investigate this and do it properly for the people involved that are concerned about this would be my, my solution.
Jeff, Alderman Kubaki?
I don't see at this point that we have an, that we should be deferring this, we've got a contract in place, you're talking about...
A bid in place.
Or a bid in place, you're talking about not accepting that bid, which means we have no contract, which means we go back to what Alderman Hamel said, we put the entire city at risk with higher bids for all of our mowing jobs. I would prefer to see the MAA work with the city, I think there's a tremendous, tremendous opportunity to create a company that does this type of work. The MAA, I mean, we've got the equipment, the MAA has got the manpower, all they need is the training to be able to operate this and, you know, put themselves in a position where they can do their own fields in a manner that we require them to do it. But deferring it, to me, is just not an option at this point in time.
John was next.
Alderman Hamel?
Is it John?
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Engelhardt, you're right.
You know, and I'm not gonna be voting on this except for extending because of conflict of interest, so for all of you to decide when you make your vote.
Thank you, Alderman Hamel?
If we did what Rob said and deferred this, so a lease could be worked out, doesn't that change what we requested for in the RFP?
Yeah, basically, you've got a contract on the table, and the contract is for mowing and then also for prepping these fields. So you've gotta be careful in terms of what you'd wanna do, you know, if you wanna, you're telling me you wanna either accept or reject that, it's hard to accept it and then also try to work out a lease. I'm not saying it's impossible, but you're either gonna accept it or reject it. Happy mowers out there thinking, you know, I know it's not a guarantee, but it was written in that contract about you should anticipate getting so many field preps per year. And that was put in there, and so you gotta be concerned that they're thinking that they're gonna get this business. And so I think we just have to be careful about saying all of a sudden we're going to accept it and then try to still enter into a lease. I think if you reject it, that's different, because then you're gonna go back out on the mowing thing and you could then do something else on the fields. Does that make sense?
But wouldn't it have to go back out for an RFP if you take that out of there, because that's what... Because that's what...
Changes that.
Yes.
Changes everything, so that puts still...
I just want to clarify, because it's a little confusing. I think you're singling out, they can't, what can't be pulled out is just the field prep.
Right.
You'd have to deny the entire bid.
No, I understand that.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
So, you deny the bid, and then basically you can break this out into two things. One is mowing, and one is field prep. You could do that if that's what you want to do.
Then it has to go back out for bid for just the mowing, though, right?
Right, well, an RFP would, would have to be put out. Doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to go to a public bid. I, we did that on this one. It doesn't have to. It's not public construction. We just did it because that's how it was done. You would have to put on RFP, though, and get information from people to see how much they'd want to do it.
Right, my concern is they know what this is already, and it...
It's, it's, it's a public document, so even if they don't know, they could request it and get it. So, yeah, you're right.
Just to clarify, I'm, I'm not looking to reject the bid. I'm looking to defer it for a week to see if there's going to be some common ground made. That was what, what I was looking at, so. And, and like I said, in hopes that if it does, doesn't, we don't get a deferral and we go through this, I, I hope that the parties can still get together and come up with some kind of solution and make this work.
Right.
I, I just want to give everyone the reality of, of what this all entails. April 26, first baseball game. April 29th and May 4th, 10 baseball games. Rugby and soccer practice has already started. We, when I say fields in this whole contract, you're looking at just MAA with 200 games. That is a small portion of this contract of everything going on. We have baseball games, so we have, we have, I think we're up to 400 already scheduled. MAA has 200, okay? So, this is game on Friday, April 6. I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm letting you know, parks, when I say soccer and rugby fields, there's no grass growing right now. It is going to be growing grass real soon. This is weed eradication as part of this contract. I got to get guys out there to the weeds. We got to do boulevards. The, the boulevards on Janesville Road, Moreland Road, they need work coming, and the other thing that's happening is that picks up all the garbage along Janesville Road and the things, all the planter beds. This is more, you're, you're looking at one little portion of a huge contract here, and I just want to kind of let you know that we're at that point, and, and I mean, deferring it, sending it back out, you're going to see some, some delays in everything, and I'm just want to give that out to everyone. It's, it's, we're in this, I mean, baseball season starts, so.
And, you know, if I, wait, I want to jump in. I understand what you're all saying. MAA was here at the last meeting, and they said, I, I chair, I can do this occasionally, but, and I'll give you your opportunity. They had said that they were good for '19, and that they were just looking ahead at 2020, and so there, there is time. There's absolutely time. Alderman Wolf?
Like I said, we, we are the policy side, and I, I think I, I mentioned the word "easy", and not that I'd want to do this, but what would be the alternative if we didn't do this? The city would have to do it, and, and maybe that's something we should look at in the future, and maybe we ought to get back into it. I went through the outsourcing, the easy, easability of doing things. I went through the unfriendliness that we're starting to get to. These are all concerns that are starting to roll up, and I think this is what's bringing it all together right now for the city, and, and that's what I'm looking at, and that's fine, I'm, I'm done if you guys want to do what we want to do next.
I just want to have, there is no change to what has been happening.
Well, that's...
There's no cha, there's no change. There's no change. No, there's no change. It's just that the cost came in higher. Okay, is there anything else?
Yeah.
Alderman Borgman?
Yeah, I just, if you, if you believe Facebook, I'm going to be stoned. My house is going to be burned, and my family tarred and feathered and ridden out of town. But, to, to have this kind of a vote two weeks prior to needing it, less than two weeks, 10 days, from what you're telling me, at April 26th, you know, you, you hamstring us. What can we do? We, we can't say no.
Easability.
So, so, so I, I realize you might have started on this early, but it sure didn't get pushed along very fast.
And, Scott, I think you should enlighten them that you were waiting on the MAA and the clubs because they had alternate bids and they took time to decide what they wanted.
Correct.
And, and to bring this, to bring this up at this, you know, when, when it's 10 days, you know, this has happened before on other things, and it's really, it, it gives, it gives us no option, and, and I'm, I'm really, it, it's an unfortunate thing, but we just have to accept it now, and I'm, I'm, I feel very bad about that. I feel like these two gentlemen, that we haven't done our job. It's, it's, I think it's, I think, I think we missed the boat on this one. I really do.
Alderman Madden?
I think this council needs to sit down and decide if we want to continue to have a flat tax, or if we want to start supporting some of the 501(c)(3)s in this city, because we can't continuously do this without raising taxes, and I, we have to make up our minds. Are we going to help these 503(c)(3)s, or are we going to keep a flat tax? And we got to do that before we continue on this, down this road. I think we should get this moving. We need to get this going. We got boulevards that need taken care of. We got numerous clubs of all sorts that need these fields besides MAA, and we have to have a Cow meeting talk about how we're going to move forward.
I love the talk. Alderman Wolf? No, I don't, I don't disagree. I, I, I think that some of the, you're talking about the tax dollars and stuff, some of this, if the city takes over certain things, it might cost us more. I mean, that's what I'm looking at, you know? Or maybe we just don't offer them, and we don't have such a great city after all, you know? So, it, it, that's a touchy line between do you want to support certain parts of the community more than others? I mean, yeah, it's very hard to do. I mean, that, that's why we're up here. Again, we're talking the easy choice again. I, I, I want to get away from being easy. I think things are getting too easy for us, and, and I'm not comfortable with it. I, you know, I don't know how to express it. I just, I just feel like I'm losing touch a little bit because we're kind of, I, I think Neil said "hand-fed" or whatever, and, and maybe, maybe we should be looking more at the policy when it's up here and, and rather than being, explaining the policy. It, it's just concerning to me. You know, when your gut tells you one thing, and then you do something else because it affects the whole city for a whole tax base, I mean, I understand the, the bid and the contract and all that. It, it doesn't make me feel like it's 100% right, and, and, and I'm going to go back to it. If the rec department takes over baseball, we'll lose the quality of that, and, and the cost will go up. It, it just absolutely will, because then we'll be responsible for field prep and, and everything else. So, not only that, we'll be using our own people, and that'll cost more money. So, it, it's a fine line. Not that I disagree with you. It, it's a fine line that, I, I like some of the touchy-feely part of it, that the citizens are, are involved, and, and, and they're, they're looking for our guidance, and, and that's what we need to do, so.
Alderman Kubaki?
Maybe I'm missing something. This started out last fall with putting this to bid. No one bid on it. You were in touch with MAA. I know you were, because I talked to the MAA leadership throughout this whole process. So, they've been involved to make these, to, to have a company do these fields. The only way that, that Scott saw this was to make it a mandatory part of this bid, and those bids came in, what, 60, 60 days ago? So, it's not that, that this has been a surprise. I mean, we've all been aware of these things for, for two months now, and, and why it's a big surprise, and that just baffles me. I, I don't understand this whole discussion. We've got a fiscal responsibility up here as well. You know, it's nice to have the touchy-feely stuff, and Rob, I'm, I'm surprised, because last week you went into a tirade about, you know, how you're buying your kids video games or some, and stuff.
I, I didn't, I didn't get in a tirade, actually.
But, in any case, this week is a whole different story. I guess I don't understand that. We, we've got a fiscal responsibility. I think we all know what the numbers are, and we all know that if we put those numbers at risk, we're putting all of our citizens at risk financially. I, I, I'm baffled by this whole discussion.
I, I disagree. I, I, we're not putting anything at risk, because if we don't do anything, the city has to do it. So, that's not our responsibility to, to make that happen. That's, that's, again, the easy way out. That's my, that's my point. I understand Scott did a good job putting the bids together. I agreed with him on all the stuff. I, I just came down to what is 100% right and what is not, you know? And, and that's where I'm at, so, you know, I, I, I always say, when it comes to the property owners, I, I err on the property owner's rights. When it comes to the citizens, I, I really want to listen to them and try to error on what they're telling us, and, and I think that we, I think we learned from this one. I think we need to, to sit back down with them and see if we can hammer something out and see if there's something else we can do, and, and I'm the only one who came up with the alternative with a lease per game type thing, and I think that if that doesn't work in the future, I think it would.
Please cast your vote.
I have to do a vote call.
How are we doing?
I'm sorry. You can't do it, Janice.
Machines, no machines.
Alderman Madden?
Yes.
Alderman Kubaki?
Yes.
Alderman Engelhardt is abstaining.
Abstaining.
Alderman Capusta is absent. Alderman Borgman?
Yes.
Alderman Hamel?
Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
No.
There are four in favor and one opposed, and one abstention. Okay, thank you. Resolution 29, 19 is approved. City official reports, none. Communications miscellaneous business, none. Future agenda items, reconsiderations? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Were you not going, were we not going to have committee assignments?
This is not a regular meeting.